I now call the November 10, 2020 meeting of the City of High Point Planning and Zoning Commission to order. My name is Tom Kirkman. I am Chair of the Commission. I will ask the Recording Secretary to conduct a roll call vote to the Commissioners that are in attendance this evening.
Can I call your name, please? Answer present. Mr. Uzak?
Present.
Mr. Kirkman?
Present.
Ms. McGill?
Present.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Morgan?
Present.
Ms. Swift?
Present.
Mr. Venable?
Present.
Ms. Wheatley?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight members in attendance.
Very well, we do have a quorum. I want to also acknowledge that this evening, staff from the Planning and Development Department, Transportation Department, the City Attorney's Office are in attendance to provide technical and professional assistance to this commission. Commission will now consider the minutes from the October 27, 2020 meeting of the commission. Are there any questions or corrections for the minutes as they've been presented to us? Nothing? In that case, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Ray Wheatley, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wheatley has made a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Commissioner Swift, as second in the motion, I'll ask the Recording Secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
If you have any questions, yes or no in response to the motion to approve the October 27 minutes as presented. Mr. Uzak?
Yes.
Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight votes in favor of that motion.
Very well, by a vote of eight to zero, the minutes of October 27, 2020 have been approved as presented. Before we begin our public hearing this evening, on behalf of the Commission, I would like to welcome everyone. The Commission is charged with reviewing and making recommendations to the City Council on a wide variety of development applications and on plans and policies for the city. Our review includes conducting a public hearing to attain additional information and comments that could be important when evaluating the item. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the resulting state restrictions on public gatherings, the Commission is meeting remotely in accordance with state law. It necessitated some changes to our normal meeting procedure, which I will take a few moments to explain. Eight Commissioners are present at City Hall this evening. Items on the agenda will be heard as normal, with a member of city staff presenting a summary of the application, followed by the staff's recommendation. The applicant and those assisting the applicant, and all who are attending this meeting remotely, will then be given an opportunity to present information in support of the item. The Planning and Development staff published and sent notices that solicited the public to provide comments on these items by email, phone, or letter. The Commission has not received any public comment, well, actually, there is one public comment which we will get to, I believe it's on the first item. Is that correct? We'll get to that when we hear the first request. The public comment on these items will extend for an additional 24 hours beyond the conclusion of tonight's hearings. For that reason, the Commission will not be voting on any hearing on tonight's agenda. Instead, this meeting will be recessed to Thursday, November 12, at 6:00 PM. This will allow the Commission to further discuss any additional information or comments that have been submitted by the public before making an official recommendation to the City Council. There's no change to the order of business, so we'll jump right in with the first item on tonight's request. Windsor Investments LLC zoning map amendment 20-22. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Herb Shannon, Senior Planner with the City of High Point Planning and Development Department. And the first public hearing item is zoning map amendment 20-22. This is a request from Windsor Investment. It pertains to a 44.68 acre tract of land along the western portion of the city limits. Although this site is within Davison County, it is within the High Point corporate limits as the property was annexed in 1992. The applicant's request in rezoning this 44.6 acre tract of land from its current residential single-family three district to a conditional zoning single-family five district to facilitate development of a single-family subdivision. The site consists of four parcels along the south side of West Windover Avenue, approximately 880 feet west of Walburg Road. And the overhead projection you have shows the site in question. Those areas that you see highlighted in white are lands that have already been annexed and are currently a part of the City of High Point corporate limits. Those areas highlighted in gray are lands in unincorporated Davison County. The applicant is requesting, is proposing development of a single-family subdivision on this site. The site is impacted by multiple physical constraints consisting of three steep terrain and a Duke power overhead transmission line easement. And so because of these constraints, the applicant's request of rezoning to the conditional zoning R5 district to allow some flexibility in the manner in which the site could be developed. This is a topography map of the site, and if you're not familiar with reading a topography map, where the lines are further apart, that means the land is fairly flat or level. Where the lines are real close together, the topography is fairly steep. The zoning sites outline in this greenish border. So you can see along the West Lexington Avenue frontage of the site, it's fairly level, but as you progress southward into the site, you can see there is quite a bit of topography. There's a perennial stream that runs along the southern boundary of the site, and there are associated flood zone areas. There's also intermittent streams that come up through the middle of the site, one in this general direction, and one along the western boundary of the site. And this is an aerial photo of the site, and you can see that Duke transmission line that also runs through the site. The current R3 and proposed R5 districts are similar in that they're both principally intended for a single-family development. However, there are two differences. The first being density, the R3 district allows development densities of up to three units per acre, while the R5 district allows smaller lot sizes and permits densities up to five units per acre. The second difference is allowable uses. The R5 district does allow single-family detached dwellings, but it also allows twin home developments. However, it must be for a development of at least five acres, and you can't have no more than two units attached, so it's only for twin home type development. Far as zoning history on this site, there have been some other zonings in this general area. Let me go back to the slide that has a larger area. Approximately three quarters of miles to the west of the site, there are other single-family subdivisions. You have the Ridgeland Downs development in this area, R3 zoning from the 1980s, the Swan's Gate development from the 1990s. More recently, you have the Swan's Landing single-family development for conditional use R3. There's also been, if you recall, the Pennfield subdivision's in this area, and that's right here. As you may recall, in September, you reviewed a case for that site, or they were updating their master plan. The Pennfield subdivision was initially approved for a twin home subdivision. It did allow single-family, and as you recall, your September public hearing, the master plan was updated to allow some of those remaining lots to be developed for single-family detached rather than twin home developments. But that's just an example of developments that have occurred in this general area. As far as the zoning site, the site obtained its current zoning in 1992 for residential zoning. There was a zoning request in 2000 for the northern 11 acres, the two northern port lots in the site. That 2000 zoning approval was for a request to rezone from residential to an institutional district to allow a conjugal care facility. And also, that request included a proposal to change the land use from low-density residential to institutional. The staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of that request. However, City Council did recommend or did deny the request due to concerns from the neighbors with a desire to keep that area for residential uses. I would also note for the Planning and Zoning Commission, also for members of the public who are listening, for informational purposes, the staff report included information regarding traffic impact in schools. The Transportation Department provided information that the proposed 102 lot, single-family subdivision, would generate approximately 963 trips a day, or 65 trips during the PM peak hour. A traffic impact analysis was not required, as that analysis is only required for a residential development that would generate over 150 trips within the AM peak hour in this site. Based upon analysis by the Transportation Department, would not be near that. The most would be 65 trips during the PM peak hour. And as a courtesy, staff informed Davis County Schools of this proposed rezoning and asked them to provide comments, and that's included in your staff report far as impacts on schools in that area. And as noted in the comments they provided, there's no significant increase to the area schools or impacts on the design capacity as anticipated. Key items to note from the staff analysis, staff looked at compatibility with the surrounding area. The land use plan designates this portion of the city as low-density residential. This is a copy of the city's land use plan map for this portion of the city's planning area. The area you see highlighted in yellow is designated by the adopted land use plan as low-density residential. That's primarily for a single-family developments up to five dwelling units per acre. I would also note that there is a study area for this portion of the city, the northeast area Davison Plan, which was adopted in 2002, and that also noted that single-family housing would be the prominent use type in this area. The request that conditional zoning R5 district permits residential units, development up to five units per acre, so that is consistent with the land use plan. I'd also note, when looking at compatibility, as I previously noted, the site does have quite a few encumbrance, the steep slopes, the streams. And with the streams, the development ordinance requires stream buffers on both sides of streams, depending on how the streams classified, that can range from 50 to 100 feet buffer on both sides of the stream. Due to those constraints, the applicant has noted that approximately 35 to 40% of the site would remain as undeveloped, and they're looking at approximately 102 units, about 2.3 units per acre, and that is in line with the land use plan designation of low-density residential for this area. Staff also evaluated impacts in regards to traffic. The current traffic count along this portion of West Lexington Avenue exceeds 5,000 trips per day. Thus, staff has noted to the applicant that any development of this site, far as access and putting a public street through, would require installation of a turn lane, and that would be something that would be evaluated, and those technical details would be handled as part of subdivision approval. But because of that, the applicant has offered a condition to dedicate right-of-way along the West Lexington Avenue frontage of the site to ensure sufficient road width or right-of-way width for installings improvements. We are, staff also looked at environmental impacts. The site is within the Yakton PD non-water supply area, and if development, grading, or site improvements exceed one acre, and if built-upon area exceeds 24%, stormwater control measures are required by the development ordinance to mitigate stormwater runoff. And as I previously noted, anytime there's a classified stream, depending on intensity of development, if it's a perennial stream, a 100-foot buffer is required on both sides of streams. If it's determined to be an intermittent stream, a 50-foot wide buffer is also required on both sides of the stream, so the development ordinance will take care of those environmental impacts. One final thing to note, staff looked at, are there any impacts or adverse impacts on adjacent lands? This proposal would not introduce any new land uses that have not already been developed in this area. Prior zoning approvals have permitted both single-family and twin-home developments in this area, and there have been no changes in land use policies, as other properties along this corridor have received zoning for single-family and twin-home developments. Thus, staff is recommending approval of this request to rezone this 44.6 acre tract of land to a conditional zoning residential single-five district. The request is consistent with adopted policy guidance, as the allowable uses and density of the proposed CZR5 district are supported by the adopted land use plan in the northeast Davison area plan. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest, as prior zoning approvals allow both single-family and twin-home developments on this segment of the West Lexington Avenue corridor. Are there any questions of staff at this time regarding this application?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for Mr. Shannon.
Commissioner Uzak, you, I heard you mention that one of the conditions where they had to provide some land for turn lanes on Lexington, are there other conditions that are part of the, that make this a conditional zoning?
That is the only conditions. Other issues will be able to be addressed through the subdivision process, far as stream buffers and stub streets to abutting lands for future connections.
The second question, are there, is there a number of units such that when you reach that number, you have to have more than one entrance or an exit?
Yes, one access point is sufficient up to 50 units.
Okay.
Over 50 units, two points of access is required, and when you have 150 or more, then you're looking at three or more. If there is a, the ordinance has provisions where the applicant can request exemptions to those standards, but they would have to document that there is no other way of providing physical connection to another street via, in this situation, they have limited street frontage, or you have environmental constraints and so forth, that would make provision or connecting back to the road not feasible. That is something that's part of subdivision review, the applicant would have to specifically document that they're meeting those standards. In regards to this request, the applicant did get in contact with staff early and discussed those issues with us, and they did document to staff satisfaction that they met those exemption requirements of the development ordinance.
Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Moore had a question.
I think I'm good.
Are you good?
Thanks.
Anything else for Mr. Shannon? If not, I'll ask if the applicant is present.
I'm present.
Do you have anything you'd like to offer on this request?
I have a presentation. I have a.
Very well, let me, let me get you.
I was going to go through real quick.
Record.
My name is Charlie Hall. My address is 5603 New Garden Village Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Charlie Hall, and I'm here representing Windsor Homes. With me tonight, I have David Michaels. He is the head of land acquisition and development here at Windsor Homes. Tom Hall, President of Windsor Homes, and Homer Wade, the President of Borum and Wade. He's doing the engineering on this site. You can go to the next slide, please. So, the development we are proposing is located along the south side of West Lexington Avenue, and we are requesting rezoning of this 44.66 acre tract of land from its current R3 district to a conditional zoning R5 district to facilitate the development of a single-family subdivision. And the proposed R5 zoning conforms with the current land use plan in the area. And prior zoning approvals have allowed both single-family and twin-home developments along this segment of West Lexington Avenue, so we believe that our site will be a good fit for this area. As Herb mentioned earlier, this site is impacted by multiple physical constraints, including three stream buffers, deep slopes, and a Duke energy overhead transmission line. That is why we are requesting this R5 zoning, so we can have smaller lots, and it'll just give us more options to work around on this very tough site. Next slide, please. So this is just a aerial view of the site, the same document that Herb showed earlier, showing what's in the surrounding areas. You can go to the next slide, please. And this is a view showing the various, sorry, the various R3, apologize. This is showing the various zoning in the area. You can see our site would fit right in with what is around in the surrounding areas. You have R3 to the north, R3 to the south, and basically surrounding the entire site. Next slide, please. This is the concept plan that Borum and Wade drew up for us, and this is actually presented at the Neighborhood Community Meeting via Zoom. So they, they got a general, you know, idea of what we are proposing, and we're able to answer a lot of questions for them. As you can see, the Duke Energy power line is running through the middle of the site, so we are proposing 49 lots to the south of the power easement and 53 lots to the north of the easement. And just as Herb showed earlier, you can see the various streams throughout the site and the steep slopes that we have to work around. Next slide, please. So these are some of the site considerations that we looked at. So traffic issues, the site will be accessed via West Lexington Avenue, which is a public North Carolina Department of Transportation street. We are showing three future connections to adjoining lands. The City of High Point Transportation Director and the NCA DOT shall approve the exact location and design of all access points and improvements. And as we said earlier, as part of the condition, we are dedicating 50 feet from the center line of West Lexington Avenue in order to be able to perform any improvements on the frontage of this job site. Streams and wetlands, all the streams and wetlands have been identified and delineated, and we will comply with all stream buffering and environmental requirements. Stormwater management, as mentioned earlier, 35 to 40% of the job site will be open area, and our intent is to develop the site as a low-density development with a less than 24% built-upon area. We are also trying to work with numerous constraints regarding streams, wetlands, topography, access points, power lines, and develop a site that respects all of these factors. Next slide, please. So for our communication efforts, we had a Zoom meeting, and for notification for this meeting, we sent out letters to 19 addresses within a 300-foot radius of the proposed site, and we held the Required Citizen Information Meeting on October 14 via Zoom. We did have four property owners in attendance during this meeting. Next slide, please. So during the Zoom meeting, we showed them the concept plan that I pulled up on the PowerPoint earlier, and their main concerns were really, they just wanted to know what was going on with our development and what we were proposing to put on this job site. And some of the main concerns during the call were density. I know one of the homeowners in the area was concerned that we were going to do, you know, R5 and have 200 and some units in the area. We told him that was not feasible with these steep slopes and stream buffers and wetlands. So we did show him the plan, that it only had 102 units, give or take, and that was only going to be, yeah, around 2.3 units per acre, way below the R5 designation. Price range came up, we told him that was hard to gauge right now, we know the markets in Hopeport trend, and that could change by the time we start, you know, developing next year, so it was hard to pinpoint a number on the price range. Plans to improve West Lexington Avenue, we told him we do have to dedicate 50-foot right-of-way on the entire frontage, and we also will have to put in a turn lane, and further improvements will be given to us during the next approval process. And we also showed three stub streets on the plan. They just asked if there's going to be any future connectivity, and we told them we were putting in three streets for future purposes. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, we feel this request would be a good area, means would be good for this area of High Point. The conceptual plan that we showed at this PowerPoint would have about 102 lots. This plan, as we said, we may gain or lose a couple lots on this plan, just depending on final approvals. Even if we were able to get up to 110 lots in this development, we would still be well under three units per acre and looking at somewhere in the range of 2.46 units per acre. And that would be well below the five going units per acre maximum called out in this land use plan. And as mentioned earlier, the Planning Board staff is in support of our requests, and we appreciate your time and consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have. Thank you.
Very well, Mr. Hall, thank you. The Commissioners, have any questions for Mr. Hall? Commissioner Moore?
Commissioner Moore, I was reading the notes, and I think I just heard, it was kind of tough to hear audio, but questions about price range and/or perhaps size of home, I think I heard you say that you didn't, you weren't able to comment on that?
So, the price range is going to be hard to pinpoint at this time. We are in an uptrend in the market, and, I mean, usually a house around the size of, which we're proposing here is about 2200 to probably 3,000 square feet, probably like in, starting somewhere in the mid 250 range.
And the second question, maybe I missed it on the different maps, you were speaking earlier, and at 50, there was one entry point, I think we were talking about 100 to 102. Where is that outlined in terms of like a secondary access point to the lot?
Well, that's part of the development ordinance. Development ordinance notes that if you have more than 50 lots, you would need two points of access. This is the concept plan that the applicant submitted. The development ordinance has provisions where if you can document because of physical constraints or your site configuration, there are several criteria that you look at that you're unable to provide physical connections, that, and when we talk about access point, it's physical connections to streets, then they can request exemptions. Now, this is not a binding plan, just want to make sure you understand that, but the applicant did get in contact with staff early to discuss that issue with us. But that is not a zoning condition issue, that is a provision that they have to meet with the development ordinance, and that will be something that staff will review in detail as part of subdivision approval.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir. Morgan.
Commissioner Moore.
Mr. Morgan, Commissioner, one of the questions I have is, one, is the right-of-way dedication, that is the only condition that we have from this particular one?
Yes, that is the only condition.
Pull back that same map you just had, the site plan. So we're looking at a right-of-way condition of 50 feet from the center line of West Avenue, and I'm looking at the plan, and that will include if that, if we do any expansions into West Lexington Avenue, that will cut through that wetland out front? Is that what we're looking at?
Far as any wetlands impact, that will be part of the subdivision review. The condition specifically notes, from the center line of the road, you have to go back 50 feet, and any portion of that 50 feet that's on a property, that gets dedicated as part of the right-of-way. That is something that we cannot require as part of subdivision approval, that's why it is specifically a condition of the zoning request.
So the only condition we have is the 50-foot right-of-way?
Dedication, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Swift?
I have a question, Mr. Swift. So I understand that it's 102 units proposed, and it can be twin homes and single-family. Are there any twin homes planned for years that are planned to be single-family?
That may be more of a question for the applicant. I would note, as long, you couldn't just do a lot here and a lot there as twin home, you would have to do a twin home development that is at least five acres.
Okay.
So that is an allowable use of the R5 district. That is something that could be allowed, but it's not, I'm going to put a twin home on this lot and a twin home on that lot. They would have to do a twin home development of at least five acres.
Okay, I just noticed sometimes they're integrated, and you'll have so many single families, and then you'll have a section that's twin homes, and I just wondered if that was part of the plan or not. And I just wondered if that was part of the plan or not.
Anything else from Mr. Hall or Mr. Shannon?
More, I just want to know if the applicant can respond to her, to the question.
Did the applicant hear Ms. Swift's question?
Yes, sir. Charlie Hall with Windsor Homes. So we previously looked at a couple of other kinds of plans, potentially thinking about adding some townhomes in here. And it wasn't really feasible with the size of the lot and the, you know, steep, steep slopes and some of the spots. So we have decided to just stick with strictly single-family homes for this development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from Mr. Hall or Mr. Shannon? Thank you, gentlemen. In that case, I'll open the floor for deliberation by the commissioners. Anyone have anything? One thing that I would toss out is the single point of ingress and egress on the West Lexington Avenue, although it would appear from the stub streets, I see that possible future development will take place west of the site and at some point possibly more homes are built that will be a second entrance and exit. Any thoughts, any comments?
Commissioner Moore, I mean, I agree. It'll be interesting to see how that develops. A lot of homes for one in and out.
But, but it does, as Mr. Shannon pointed out, it does meet the criteria that they're working under.
It looks like there's something stubbed out towards that Rob Swain Road. What does that road look like now?
Rob Swain is not a public street.
Okay.
It's a private easement, driveway easement.
Okay. I sort of thought that from the looks of things. Just wanted to ask that question.
Anything else?
Commissioner Wheatley, I was just curious if they have plans to widen. I know years ago when we were trying to do something up on, close to Bain Street, they were talking about widening that, making it four lanes or five lanes or something.
Far as West Lexington Avenue?
Yeah, West Lexington Avenue, if they have any plans to go out that far.
Let Mr. Venable from the Transportation Department address that.
Yes, we've submitted plans to NCDOT to widen West Lexington, basically from where it ends, three lanes currently, about at Kensington, all the way out to just past the last city limits. Now, that's in consideration with DOT and their funding situation. It's unlikely that it will be funded in the next round of TIP, which will be, which will come out in three years. But we do have plans for future widening and that's part of the right-of-way requirement as well.
Right.
Is going ahead and getting that right-of-way. So we will have it for that future widening.
Looks like this could be our new ski club down the road.
Potentially.
Okay, Commissioner Kirkman, again, there was a, a public comment made. It was anonymous, but it was a comment nonetheless. I assume each of the commissioners received that in their email. City summarized it as the citizens said rezoning would allow an extremely high number of houses to be built. I think both the city staff and the applicant addressed that fairly well. Does anybody have any other questions or comments on that public comment? If there's nothing else, I'm going to close the public hearing on this item for this evening. But the public will have an additional 24 hours for additional comments and questions. Over the next 24 hours, anything that the city does receive, they will send to the commissioners. And Thursday evening, when we continue the meeting, the, this commission will give further consideration to such comments and make a recommendation at, at that meeting. Now move to the second item on tonight's agenda, which City of High Point Text Amendment 20-03.
Good evening. I'm Andy Piper, City Plan, Senior Planner with the City of High Point Planning and Development Department, presenting text amendment case 20-03, which amends various sections of the city's development ordinance to address recent revision to the state's watershed rules. Just to give a little bit of background, state agencies are directed to review and update their existing rules in the North Carolina Administrative Code at least every 10 years. This prompted the state's Division of Water Resources to make several changes to the rules related to watershed protection that became effective this past summer. As a result, High Point must amend its development ordinance to address these changes. Because there are a number of chapters of the ordinance affected, the text amendment is broken into multiple sections. I'm just going to go over briefly. Section one, starting on page 29 of your packet, removes watershed variances as a separate procedure in the table that summarizes the different review authorities. Because the state rules now require watershed variances, like other types of variances, to be subject to a quasi judicial hearing. So they will instead become a distinct type of variance decided by the Board of Adjustment. Similarly, in section two, on pages 30 through 33 of the packet, removes minor watershed variances as an application decided by the city's technical review committee, although they still will review and make a recommendation. It also adds implementation and enforcement of surface water buffer protection to the powers and duties of the Engineering Services Director. And like a lot of this makes a lot of, a number of corrections to the terminology to be consistent with how the rules are now worded. Section three, pages 33 through 39, includes a variety of procedural changes to the process for reviewing and deciding watershed variances, again, primarily related to removing the existing section on watershed variances entirely and instead including them with the other types of variances. And again, updates and incorporates language used in the state's rules. Section four is actually pages 39 through 56. This is the bulk of the text amendment and contains a number of changes to update procedures, terminology and references in the watershed protection standards of the development ordinance and makes other minor corrections to fix existing errors and to address other issues identified by staff. Section five, on page 56, is the only section not spurred by changes to the state watershed rules, but is a useful provision that was found in the prior development ordinance that allows a reduced minimum rear setback where single-family dwellings abut dedicated public or common area. Section six, also on page 56, is related to the previously mentioned change to add surface water buffer protection to the responsibilities of the Engineering Services Director. This stems from the state rules requiring the person in that role be certified to make onsite surface water determinations, something they are already trained to do. However, watershed protection will continue to be a team effort of all relevant staff as it is now. And then finally, sections seven, eight and nine, on pages 56 through 60, add and in some cases remove rules of measurement, abbreviations and definitions, including some from the previous version of the development ordinance that are being reinserted after inadvertently left, being left out. So in summary, this is a text amendment that's necessarily, necessary to implement the changes made to the state's watershed rules that were designed to be no more restrictive than what is currently in place and are intended to clarify the text and ensure consistency between rules across various watersheds in the state. And staff is recommending approval of the text amendment case 20-03 because the proposed amendments support goals and objectives in the land use plan to ensure that development respects the natural environment and protects and preserves environmentally sensitive locations, including watershed critical areas. And they are in the public interest because they help protect the environment and the city's water supply. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this time.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? Very well. Thank you, sir. We did not receive any public comments on that item, I believe. Public does have another 24 hours to submit them if they wish. Any of the commissioners have anything to discuss or deliberate on that item? If not, I will close the public hearing on this item and ask the commission members to please review any public comments they may receive from city staff over the next 24 hours. We will consider those or anything else you have on this item and make a recommendation at the recess meeting on Thursday beginning at 6 o'clock PM. Final item on tonight's public hearing agenda is City of High Point Text Amendment 20-04. Mr. Andrews?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Chris Andrews with the Planning Department, Planning and Development Department. Before your, before you for consideration tonight are amendments to the city's wireless telecommunications standards. These are the amendments that were introduced to you last month at your October meeting. These amendments are primarily in response to changes in state legislation and Federal Communications Commission rules that are related to wireless telecommunications and to which local governments must adhere. So these amendments are generally necessary and not discretionary. The amendments also change some of the regulations within the city's development ordinance to give some clarity and predictability to the wireless telecommunications permitting process and to improve the wireless facility standards as allowed by law. There is a section by section summary in the staff report. I'll, I'll make note that section eight is where the bulk of the technical changes or amendments are located. The sections that precede that are primarily addressing review, organization within the ordinance. So more, more of the operational changes related to staff review. And then following section eight are some adjustments, or not adjustments, amendments to definitions and whatnot as necessitated by legislation. Tonight, we are joined by Susan Raybold from Citiescape. The city has contracted with Citiescape to review our current wireless telecommunications standards and to recommend changes in order to be compliant with current legislation. Susan will speak more about the work that she and Citiescape do related to wireless telecommunications. She'll also present the proposed substantive changes. And at the conclusion, I'll follow up with staff's recommendation and answer any questions that you as a commission might have.
Very well, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Raybold with Citiescape Consultants. I'm from Greensboro, North Carolina. Thank you for having me here this evening. Our company just consults to local telecommunications, just consults to local government on wireless telecommunications issues. I want to make sure that you know we do not build towers, we don't own towers, we don't provide a wireless service that people subscribe to. We just work with local government to help sort through the public policy changes that come down from the federal and state governments. We were hired by High Point to help with that process of understanding the changes. Because there have been a lot, especially since 1996 and a lot very recently. So I want to talk first about some of the definitions that I'm going to be using in the presentation so that we all understand what I'm talking about when I reference them. In the slide before you, you have two types of infrastructure for a macro cell. The macro cell tower is the typical site that you're most probably accustomed to seeing. It's been deployed for broadcast for many decades and then deployed by the wireless industry. Those macro sites, towers can be concealed and non-concealed. You have some examples before you within the city, the concealed tree. And then with the concealed slick stick there off of West Lexington Avenue or East Lexington Avenue. The slick stick has all of the antenna and the coax cable inside the fiberglass mounting. So unlike the faux tree, you don't see any of those antenna. And then, for example, this one downtown, the lattice tower, which is non-concealed, where you see all the equipment. Something that's new with the federal government and with the state legislation is that when an antenna is mounted on an existing structure that is not a tower and was not built for the sole purpose of being a tower, is now termed a base station. Base station used to be the equipment at the base of the tower, but they've changed that. And now a base station can be a building, it can be a rooftop. It can be a water tank, it can be a silo, chimney stack, anything that the antenna mounts onto is a base station. The base stations can be concealed, they can be non-concealed. You have an examples here on this slide of two base station types here in the city. Most recently, you have started to see the deployment of small wireless facilities. These have typically been in the right-of-way and you have a good number of these that have started to be constructed. These are examples of non-concealed wireless small facilities that are in East Chester. The antenna is in the sort of a tin can dome at the top. And the coax cable that goes from that antenna down to the equipment box does not have any concealment around it. Conversely, downtown, you do have some concealed small wireless facilities and you have two different types. The first two pictures on the left show the same type of equipment, but the equipment that is mounted around the base of the tower for the meters and the processing equipment is covered by a shroud, that black box. And then the dome is covered with a shroud as well at the top. So you don't see all that, all the wires and the antenna. Up at Piedmont Parkway, you have this site that's shown on the far right where all the equipment is interior to the pole. So you have different types of wireless concealment. Also, these are painted, of course, black to match the existing utility infrastructure in those rights of ways as well. So you've actually done a very nice job with your small wireless deployments in this area to match your streetscape. You're far more advanced than some of the other communities that I work with at those design standards. So congratulations to your team on that. Current conditions and trends are that you're going to continue to see the evolution towards 5G wireless. I'm sure you've, you've heard of that. It's going to require more infrastructure, more macro cells and absolutely more small wireless facilities. In fact, we estimate 80% of all future wireless deployment, once you get towards the 5G deployment market, will be small wireless facilities. And while you're going to have more of that infrastructure coming in, you have a lot of removal of regulatory parameters from the FCC and from the state legislation. So while a lot of communities want to have a lot of regulatory processes in place to control what they look like and where they go, unfortunately, a lot of that continues to be chipped away at the federal and state levels. The way this infrastructure works is that you can't have one without the other. You have to have the macro cells in order for the small wireless facilities to work. And the macro cells continue to work on coverage of the geographic area and they absorb some of the capacity. However, it's the small wireless facilities that are actually needed for the capacity of the network. So think about how this room is wired. You have a complete circuit, everything's tied into your box. And if you were to exceed the parameters or allowable amount of juice in that box, you blow a circuit and you lose your electricity. That's what happens with these networks is more and more people use their small wireless facility or use their handsets that have apps and streaming. And they add more devices to their network, like tying in their watch and their laptop or their iPad to their phone. And having, it all uses more and more bandwidth, which is like putting too much juice into your circuit. And so it slows the network down. It causes a bottleneck. And so that's why you need these small wireless facilities to bridge and densify. They provide like a, an umbrella of densification of wireless infrastructure so that the handsets and the cars and the whole internet of things that tie ambulance drivers and public safety and police and fire to the networks, you have to have that densification. So that's why you're going to need so many sites in the future. This ordinance is intended to try and have as much of that infrastructure as least intrusive into the visual environment as possible. into the visual environment as possible. So some of the substantive substantive changes to the proposed ordinance is, one, the definitions. So I touched briefly on the new definition of base station, but there are other definitions that had to be added based on the new regulations. So you see that in the ordinance. Also, the removal of the special use permit process for the wireless facilities. That doesn't mean that they have carte blanche approval to come in and just put anything they want. There are development standards, but the the removal of the S U P process is to streamline the the process and by doing so, beefing up the regulations so that you're getting more concealed facilities than what the previous ordinance had. The the push is also to encourage co-location, the maximizing the use of all existing infrastructure before a new site is built and to have as much of the new facilities concealed as possible. All future base stations would be are proposed to be concealed and most of the utility poles and towers, and I'll get more into that in just a few moments, are also proposed to be concealed. So I want to start with the small wireless facilities first. The small wireless facilities are predominantly going in rights of ways. The facilities going in the city rights of ways, you have maintained authority over what those look like. You have lost authority on what they look like if they go in a state right of way. The intent is that you promote co-location on existing utility poles and they are allowed to do that provided they don't exceed 10 feet above the height of the existing pole. And then any new concealed new facility in the local streets and your gateway corridors, your local historic districts and any existing development with undergrounding would need to be concealed. And then any facility that is in single family and in certain residential zones would also need to be concealed. And then the other sites, small wireless facilities could be unconcealed. There's a chart in your proposed text that contains this table and it highlights a little more succinctly the type of infrastructure that's being proposed. And so you have two types of locations in the right of way and in the zoning districts. The state statutes are very vague with regards to the residential zoning. It doesn't say residential zoning district and it doesn't say land use of residential. It just simply says that the local governments can require concealed facilities in residential areas. And so we've tried to harmonize that with your existing ordinance by saying that if you have a local street in a residential area, then concealed small wireless facilities would be required. Your non-concealed small wireless facilities would only be on properties outside of city street right of way that doesn't contain single family attached or detached dwellings, duplexes or family care homes and outside those residential areas. We anticipate a lot of small wireless facilities going into residential areas because you have more and more people, especially right now, who are learning from home and working from home. And having an increased densification in that network is going to be very important. And so we anticipate a lot of new wireless facilities in those residential districts and this proposed ordinance requires that they be concealed. It also limits the height inside those street right of ways to 40 feet and then those other districts would be 50. And then on properties outside of the street rights of ways that are residential, it would be 25. And then in your overlay districts, it would be 25. And it's not until you get outside of those district areas that you are allowed the 50. So the intent is to keep the height to about 25 feet in your residential areas, which is more characteristic of the heights of those dwelling units. And then as you progress into your more minor thoroughfares and major collectors and more the non-residential land uses, you'll see the taller ones at 50. Maximum height is 50. And that's the state reg or excuse me, that's a federal definition that anything over 50 exceeds the definition of small wireless facilities. So you won't see anything taller than 50 feet. Now, when you get to the macro cells, the goal is to have all of your base stations in the future be concealed and the concealed, the towers would be allowed in any zoning district. The left is an example of a concealed tower. That's actually a, it looks like that the steeple is the concealed part, but actually that entire addition on that religious institution is the tower that was added to that building. So to give you an example of just some other ideas of what concealed towers can look like in the residential areas, they don't have to be faux trees. They can be part, you know, additions to buildings that blend in with the architecture design. The monopoles are allowed only or only monopoles would be allowed in the G B, R C, E C and I districts. And then the only districts that you would have a lattice or guide tower would be in the L I, H I, A R G and P N R districts. So every other facility other than those districts would need to be concealed. So while you're opening up the zoning districts to allow more infrastructure, it all has to be concealed in those residential and low intensity zoning districts. The heights are also being addressed. They're coming down from what you're you've seen deployed mostly presently. Your base station heights above the building would not be more than 20 feet in height. And the image on your left is an example of a faux wall around equipment around the base station on that building to give you an idea of what a concealed base station on a building could look like in the future. And then in your residential and all the residential districts, the gateway corridor, your local historic and neighborhood conservation overlay districts, your maximum heights would be 100 feet. I'll tell you how we came up with that number because we were trying to come up with the lowest possible height that would accommodate as many co-locations as possible. So we feel that with your ambient tree height and with the topography that you have and the terrain and clutter that you have from your buildings and our seasonal variables here, that 100 feet would allow you probably three tenants on that tower, depending on the type of concealed tower that they put in. Now, some towers, based on the concealment design, may only accommodate two, but with the right type of concealment, you could get three. If you go lower than 100 feet, you're going to end up with more towers because you won't have as much co-location possibility on them. So it's a wrestling, you know, it's a it's a balance. But in order to have as few towers as possible, we feel like you need to go to that 100-foot level. Outside of those areas, you're they're allowed 150 feet in the planned development, business and special districts and the general business, R C, E C and I. And then only in the P N R, A R G, L I and H I and on city-owned property and within a electrical transmission right of way are they allowed to have a facility up to 199.99 feet. And the reason why it's labeled it's less than 200 feet is because once you get to the 200-foot mark, everything's required by the FAA to be lit. And so we're trying to have towers that are not lit, which is why you have that less than 200. But it's only in those particular zone and land use classifications that you would have a tower that tall. So that's different because you have a number of towers that are taller than that presently. Some other standards that we wanted to make sure were included is that the structural integrity is designed to meet the Electronic Industries Association slash telecommunications industry associate standards. And that gets changed periodically based on wind and ice and climate change. So we wanted to make sure that standard was in there. We also wanted to make sure that towers that are built between the 80 and 100 foot have a minimum of two service providers so that structurally they're designed on the front end to accommodate that because we have seen with other communities that if you don't put that in there, they'll build the tower for the one tenant and then they put the responsibility of the structural integrity improvements on the next tenant. And then that actually discourages co-location because it becomes so expensive to do that after it's built. So we want to make sure that that's done in the very beginning. Towers that are 100 to 150 feet in height are to be designed for a minimum of three service providers and then over 150 feet for. There's a change with the setbacks. The tenant or tower builder has an option to build the tower with a setback that's basically one-to-one that accommodates the fall zone or to accommodate maybe a better use of the property. Because what we see is if you have that one-to-one or you have to have a fall zone setback around the whole tower, then they get put in the middle of the property or more out where you can see them instead of closer to the property line where you may already have some vegetation. So to balance that, we come up with a, we came up with a breakpoint technology, which means that the tower is designed, if it is, they're not designed to fail, but if they're going to have an intense situation, it crimps at a certain point. So from that point to the top of the tower, you have a one-foot setback and then you add that to the underlying zoning district setback. So that gets the tower closer to the property line, but still maintaining a sense of public health and safety concerns that communities have. Landscaping, signage, lighting and fencing is all addressed. I want to make sure that when I talk about signage, this isn't, no advertising signage is allowed on the tower. This is nameplate signage that goes at the site that lets you know who owns it, who to contact in case of an emergency. We found that a lot of sites don't have that in our research and so we always put that in there because in the event that you have a power outage or there's a situation going on that you know who to contact. And then you're not allowed to regulate the emissions, but you are allowed to require them to provide that a letter of compliance. So not only is there a letter of compliance required for all new towers, but as they add co-locations onto towers or as they add base stations to buildings and other structures, they're required to provide a composite compliance so that you can make sure that as co-locations are added, they are still in compliance with the overall standards of the federal government. There are a few other changes to the text, but those are the main ones. And I wanted to make sure you understood why those changes were being promoted in the the text and the reasoning behind them. I'm happy to answer any questions about the ordinance or what's going on in the industry at this time.
Fantastic. Commissioners have any questions?
Commissioner Moore, I've got one. With respect to the compliance documentation, is that simply a letter of compliance or is there access to data as part of that process?
It is a letter of compliance that the engineer provides that documents their calculations and certifies that it's, it meets the standards.
Anything else?
Commissioner Morgan has a question.
Excuse me, I just, I want to go back. We, now, we have started, we have a few communities that want that provided in an affidavit. So if you want to strengthen the language, you could add an affidavit to be required. I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah. I mean, it's interesting, given that, to some extent, given the FTC's position or S C C, I guess, right?
S C C.
S C C. That we are limited or somewhat hands tied, right? I think the the conversation about this, while I certainly appreciate the aesthetics, it's the the other unknowns, which are, it's not, it's not there yet either. So I think this is really about making sure that whatever standards that we put in place allows those to grow with the science because I think we will be much more informed in five to 10 years from now than we are today. And I'm probably as progressive as they come with respect to technology, but I'm still concerned as to, you know, where is it, what's it going to be. But I'm also a believer in science. So I just want to make sure that our policies will mature, have the ability to mature as the science progresses over time, which means that we need access to data.
So I didn't mean to cut you off.
Commissioner Morgan had a question.
Well, along those same lines, what you have up as it relates to the design for the collections, 80 feet to 100 feet, two service providers per. Now, does that mean if someone comes in and wants to do a tower, they automatically have to have two providers to build that particular tower?
No, it means that they have to structurally design the facility to accommodate two.
Two.
Minimum of two.
Minimum of two. Now, for a design, is, is that, is that a standard two? I mean, for for that particular one and a monopole, you can usually do three or four, depending on the weight of the 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 equipment. What is the, what is the average with the different pole systems?
Well, with the, it depends on the type of concealment. The non-concealed definitely have a lot more flexibility in terms of adding more tenants to the towers. And one of the challenges that we run into with the concealed facilities is that certain types require the same service provider to take more than one port. So for example, this slick stick that you have, it's called a unipole and it's also called a slick stick that's behind the shopping center on Lexington. It's not uncommon for like T-Mobile or AT&amp;T or Verizon to take three ports because they are operating in a wide spectrum of frequencies. It used to be that they just operated in the low or the high, but now they operate in both. And so this type of pole doesn't allow them to just put one ray of a antenna array on it. So they have to take multiple locations. So it may be designed for three or four ports, but you'll have one provider using half of it.
Right, they'll stack in the rays down the, down the port.
That's right. So that's more limited compared to this, the lattice tower that you have downtown. That allows a great deal of flexibility in terms of where they can mount. And they can mount different types of antenna and dishes if they need to have some sort of microwave backhaul or hop from that site to beam into the area that you couldn't do on that unipole.
Along those same lines, what Commissioner War said was the, are we, are we maximizing the the sites in which we are, we have the the plans for, are we making these adjustments for, are we maximizing that particular, that infrastructure for the expansion? Are we doing everything we can to make sure that we limit the amount of locations but get the maximum amount of bandwidth out of it?
I think you are. It's a very progressive approach that you're taking right now to get the, the bandwidth, the service and the coverage into your residential areas. And I think you have changes in the industry where, for example, Sprint and T-Mobile have just merged. And so it used to be you'd have Sprint and T-Mobile at a site and now you're, it's consolidating to one. On the other hand, you're going to have Dish that's eventually going to be deploying, but I'm thinking they're going to be more in the 5G sphere. The state and federal have provided a new definition. I didn't really talk a lot about it, but it's a substantial change or substantial modification. And the service providers are allowed to increase an existing tower in height or an existing base station in height if they need to accommodate an additional co-location by either 10 feet or 10% if it's a base station or 10 feet and 20%, whichever is greater on a tower, provided they meet the, provided they don't exceed the definition of substantial change. One of the definitions, one of the parts of the definition is that if you have a concealed site, they have to make sure that they don't un-conceal it. And so, but if they can come in and show that, okay, we've maximized what we can do at this tower. at this tower, and your ordinance requires co-location over a new tower being built, and there's a tower there, but we're going to have to increase it by 10 feet. If they can show that they can increase it by 10 feet and not exceed the definition of substantial change and maintain the integrity of the concealment technique, then they can add that additional on there. And you have to allow it per state and federal changes.
Last question, as it relates to the infrastructure within the switch and the base stations, what's underground and what's running? Do we have that in place, or we, I mean, we're talking about fiber, are we going to have to do any work below ground to actually facilitate these particular base stations and switches?
The city doesn't have to.
Right.
They don't have to provide fiber to the tower. The tenants are the ones that typically do that. Now, if you want to promote 5G, you can open up, that's another discussion, in terms of providing fiber and opening up access to fiber, the industry would be very much interested in that. But that is not, that's a whole nother issue outside of this policy.
Okay. Thank you. Very well. Anything else?
I have a question, Angela McGill.
McGill.
Are there any health risks from these towers being near residential areas?
Well, the FCC says there is not. And the World Health Organization did a private study, and they came up with the same conclusion. It is continually challenged by citizenry across the nation. In fact, there was a lawsuit most recently in the Ninth Circuit that challenged many things that the FCC was putting into place that was mandating local governments to do and to allow, and part of that was tied to health risks, and they were not supported in that at the Ninth Circuit. So as of now, you, you can't make a decision based on the health concerns as long as the applicant demonstrates that the tower and the infrastructure is in compliance with the guidelines of the federal government, then that's the limit that you can, can go with. And you want to make sure that as they add more tenants, that they stay collectively within that envelope as well. Now, one, I can, I can share, share with you one thing, is it, there's one, one way of visualizing how these, the RF is emitted from these antennas, is a lot like a mushroom. If you visualize, you've got the stem of the mushroom, and then you have the dome that comes over the mushroom. And so when you have a, a tower, the antenna emits that RF out, sort of like a mushroom, excuse me, sort of like a mushroom. And then the farther you get away, and the lower you go in elevation, it drops off rapidly, which is why the federal government has, you know, come up with their design guidelines because of the way that it rapidly decreases in the air from the top of the tower to the bottom. And the small wireless facilities, the power output from those antennas is significantly less than these high-powered macro cells. It's not even comparable. And so it has the same sort of umbrella, but the density of that and the power of that is a fraction of what the macro cells are.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
All right.
I believe Mr. Andrews was going to follow up with the city's staff recommendation.
Mr. Chair, just before there's any questions, I do want to summarize the process that staff has taken in sending this ordinance out. We had a 30-day public review period where this was sent to the, to the public and any stakeholders in the development community, including AT&amp;T. I think that we mentioned that at the, at the, your last meeting. The email blast was sent out to our Build High Point and Planning Development subscribers. And then it was also reviewed by other city staff as part of our, that are part of our TRC review process. And in terms of a timeline, you know, we were, our goal was to get it to this month, and then the earliest that it could go to council is December 7th. So with that, I'd like to offer the consistency and reasonableness of this, this request, that the request is consistent in that the lane, or that the proposed amendments are generally technical and legal in nature, but in part, they support the land use plan goals to enhance the aesthetic appearance in the city of High Point. And then furthermore, the request is reasonable as the amendments are necessary, changes due to state legislation and FCC telecommunications rules. So staff recommends approval of these amendments to the city's wireless telecommunications standards, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have of staff.
Commissioner Kirkman, I do have one, and I thought this was better addressed to city staff than the consultant, and it goes to something Commissioner McGill mentioned. Am I correct that any sort of request for cell tower brought before this commission, while we may consider the safety or the requirements of the structure, the actual health and safety issue of transmissions, is beyond the scope of this commission? Is that correct?
At, at this point, these requests would not, would not come to the commission to be, to begin with. So the special use permit process that exists right now would go to city council.
Because it's a quasi-judicial, yeah, I remember where that was taken.
Yes, sir.
When it goes before council, though, are they, would they then be, let's say, citizens came in and had a question on the safety, again, not of the structure, but of the radio transmissions? Am I correct that that is beyond, that the city council could not deny it?
Yes, sir.
For that reason?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did that go to the heart of your earlier question?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Andrews?
Swift, I have a, have a question.
Oh.
This may not be related to the, well, it's not related to the text, but is there anywhere that we can like go online and see like a map of where all these are around the city? Is there a website or?
Certainly, within the city's GIS system, or, I'm blinking on the, the point, the point. Within the point, there is a layer that has telecommunications facilities listed on it. So yes, you'd be able to see. It also should note the type of structure as well as the height. There may be other details in there as well, but yes, they're readily viewable to the, to the public. And then to note that if we do have a, as proposed in our ordinance, the, any wireless telecommunications permit that's, that's processed would be part of the, the public, no, not public record, but it would be open to the public to be able to view as part of our cell of citizen access, the same way that you can look up a site plan or a subdivision plan or something like that, so.
Thank you.
Very well. Any other questions for Mr. Andrews? Very good. We did not receive any public comments on this item. Public does have another 24 hours to respond with their questions and comments. If there's no more discussion from the commission on this particular item, I'll close the public hearing and remind the commissioners to keep a check on their email for any public comments or suggestions that come in from the city over the next 24 hours. And then we'll get further consideration and make a final recommendation at our recess meeting on Thursday beginning at 6 o'clock PM. Now we will move to the director's report.
I just want to call attention just to a few items in the director's report. Next month, you'll have another package of amendments associated with the comprehensive planning process, zoning process, excuse me, that we've been going through, changing the city's zoning map. But just wanted to get, that will be the, sort of the last round of items that council has initiated, but Herb has been working on preparing another group of amendments that the, to have the council initiate hopefully in December, and we'll be working on those next year. So you'll have more coming in that respect. I want to call your attention to two items that's on the report that you had a briefing on previously. One was the Eastchester and 74 land use assessment, and the other one's the Jamestown bypass assessment. We're going to schedule some public input meetings virtually for those to occur in November and December. You have a link there, if you will go to that link, there's a webpage, and we have our draft report out there. We also have the ability for folks that are interested, whether it's the commission members or the public at large, to sign up and participate in that meeting if they so desire. We've sent out information and news information as well to make people aware of this, as well as mailed notice to property owners in the area that's affected by the, the study area, in other words. So we're, we're hoping that we get some interest in the assessments, and there's an opportunity, like I said, to participate. Staff will go through the report, provide the summary recommend, draft recommendations, and then there'll be an opportunity for the public to provide input in a couple of different forums. So one is scheduled for November 17th, and that's the Eastchester and 74, one and the other one, Jamestown bypass, is scheduled for December the 15th. So this is a little bit new because of the, of the pandemic, so we're, we're doing a little virtual public meeting. So we're seeing how we can, again, find ways to get public input on our, on our work projects, our planning projects. Next meeting, you have another two-set meeting of December 8th and 10th, and we have a three zoning map amendments and one determination need for some street name changes, and those street name changes are the ones that are being recommended by the Eastchester I-74 assessment for Gordon Road, Gordon Court, Hilton, and those areas to, to adjust those names because those streets are already in, and we do need to get some official name assigned to, to those streets as well. And then I just call attention to your, to your meetings in January for the foreseeable future. Like I said before, I think this format is the number we're going to work under until sometime we're told otherwise, so. I follow ahead, sir.
Do the commissioners have anything else, any other business to attend to? If not, I will move for an adjournment to Thursday night, November the 12th. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Uzak has seconded the motion. I'll ask the recording secretary to take a roll call vote.
When I call your name, please answer yes or no in response to the question to recess the meeting to Thursday, November 12th. Mr. Uzak.
Yes.
Mr. Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. McGill.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Venable.
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman, you have eight votes.
Very well. By a vote of eight to zero, this meeting is recessed until Thursday evening, November 12th, 6:00 PM in East Chambers.